Please stand up for the pledge. Mr. Anne, would you lead us in the pledge?
Mr. Chairman, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people who hold it for which it stands, with one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Listen, can you do the call, please?
Sure. John Boyle?
Here.
Dan Esco?
Here.
Chairperson Bob Bishop?
Here.
Mark Strout is excused.
Excuse, yes.
Tom Hutchinson, town manager?
Here.
Okay, next we have minutes for October 9th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from Wednesday, October 9th, 2024 as presented.
Okay, motion been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session in accordance with General Laws 30A, Section 21a3, mid-discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Dalton Patrol Officers Union. If any open meeting may have a detrimental effect to bargaining positions of the public body and its co-chair so declares, and not, or until returned to open session after.
Okay, motion been made in second. It's ready for discussion. Okay, roll call vote, John?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bob, yes. And we will reconvene at 7 o'clock for a regular meeting. You ready, Robert? Motion's been made.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to back to open our meeting, please. It's 7 o'clock, time to address the board. This is the time when the public may address the board on any item listed on a meeting agenda, any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask you to do the following. Please identify yourself by name and address and a company or institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. Your chair, that doesn't mean be answered questions on procedural matters, please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda item, please make that request at this time. The board chair made gracious request. Address comments to the board chair and be concise. We are meeting in person and making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties. So if you'd like to be sure to participate, please attend in person. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board at this time? Is he in? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
My name is Judy Shaw. I live at 25 Central Avenue in Walton. My issue is not on your agenda, but I'm hoping that some future, not too distant future, you'll put it on your agenda. I recently had a sewer backup in my house. Now, I know the whole details. When I first moved into the house 12 years ago, I had a sewer line problem already in the system. I was able to repair that line, so the line from my home to the sewer main is fine. I had a man come out and check the line, did an inspection and load over the job. My line is clean. It's not compressed. It's not broken. It's perfectly fine. However, the main, the main line is broken. It's an old plane pipe. He had pictures to demonstrate that. Those pictures were submitted to your highway department or whoever oversees the sewer main. And of course, there's a huge root that has infiltrated the main, and that's the problem. Now, my problem is, this is going to recur. Could be in two months, four months, six months, and I have to incur a cost to motor out a root that's in the main line, not in my line. And I'm hoping that the board can address it. I realize I'm probably not the only one, just somebody who's currently having a problem. It's a huge infrastructure problem, and I'm hoping that the board will adjust that soon.
Ma'am, what was your address again?
I'm sorry?
Your address.
25 Central Avenue.
It's happening. You're aware of the issue?
Tom, will you contact Bud and make sure he gets back to us on that? We'll have the highway superintendent get on that.
So Bud was contacted initially when my sewer guy was there. He, actually, a couple of days before the sewer guy went away, he, whatever he did, said that the main was open and free, well, clearly it was.
Okay, did he see the pictures that the other person took?
As I said, my worker guy was going to send the pictures directly to Bud.
Okay.
And I cannot stay for any discussion on this note, because there might even be a discussion, but I'd like to know if they're passed down or what the results of that is.
Well, there can't be any discussion tonight, ma'am, because it's not on the agenda, but we'll get it on a future agenda. We'll notify, we'll let you know.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Okay. Number seven. Longed-waited, signed the burden property deed. Ms. Hutchinson.
He's trying to drag it out longer.
Yeah, yeah. Make them sweat.
Well, you had upwards of 25 emails going back into work over the last two days through working case, recording, closing on this property, and I believe that we're very, very close. We do need it signed D, and I think all of the other pieces are now in place as of... Is that right? So please go ahead and sign the deed and the closing. Let's be scheduled. We all have a place. No, where's the deed?
Right here.
Let's do it right here. Do we sign it out? Yes, please.
We need to vote on it.
Yes, yes. Board, now, in the square.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and sign the deed for the burden property sale as presented.
Okay, motion been made in second. I just have one comment. Esther and Tom, are you okay with this?
It's the same one, same copy of that.
Trust me, it is. Yeah, we'll make sure.
Excuse me?
We'll make sure it's the same one. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will sign it.
The last change I recall is spelling out the map and lots under it on the base instead of having a period between the map and lots.
In the survey me or?
In the deed.
Or in the deed.
Are you surprised it's in the deed?
Not in the deed, no. I think the survey was pretty much hit on.
Great, it's good, yes.
Okay, Mark. I've done the folder.
Okay, thank you.
Well, so far.
It is signed.
Okay, congratulations.
Had her to come up and take care of the note reading.
I'll get a note around. Go out there with four square fingers.
Mary.
Official.
Official.
I've had 15 years, too.
Yes, please.
Thanks, Ellen. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Okay, number eight.
The Board of Appeals, Allah, has sent out a request for comments on an idea coming up, which is an application of variance that's through Main Street for a gas station. You have to have those information, believe all that, including the application, and understand that some people on the board have some opinions about that.
I don't have a pity on that, but I think it's not worth it. They're asking, I believe in petition asks that we go to the inspector's decision to overturn. That is how the variance.
They have a petition right here with the Board of Appeals. It's an administrative appeal. We're not required to make any decision or obligated to at this board level, but they're asking the Board of Appeals to ask them for feedback from town boards.
With that, you're next, Robert. This is not the variance they're asking.
It's an administrative appeal.
Yeah.
It's not variance.
Yeah, but in the text of the petition, if they're asking for the building inspector's decision to be overturned.
That's an administrative appeal.
Right.
Correct.
It's not a variance.
Did you say the agenda is incorrect?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize.
Let's note that the agenda is incorrect and stated that they're requesting a variance and requesting an administrative appeal of the zoning enforcement officer's decision. Under support of the administrative appeal, as much as the use of the gas station, you know, it had fallen, it was not used as particularly as a gas station for what, they said, three years?
Yeah.
It exceeded the two-year limit to be grandfathered in, but it was also being used as a service station with bulk oil sales or these oil changes, and this board renewed their permit for, for fuel, underground storage tank permit just this year. So I think it would be difficult for the town to argue that that pre-existing, previous use couldn't continue. So I'm in support of it, and, you know, I think they did.
If I could flip it toward you, this is not exactly what happened. According to the building inspector, there was no mention of gas stations being allowed in a B2s up, which is an incredible story by itself, but as this is possibly settled, we can work, the plan of order to correct that error. So if you know where a gas station is not even applied, what he says is you have to be a dispenser of bulk petroleum products, and then he stopped doing that five years ago when he stopped selling gasoline, i.e. a petroleum product. So consequently, he wouldn't be able to permit to develop the property, which is booked in the, this is not in the paperwork. As a result, maybe to solve their term, it's probably the best way forward is to ask the Board of Appeals to overturn the building inspector's decision that that location, 631 Main, 630 Main Street, has not used bulk petroleum products. And hopefully, I'm not completely negative with you. He strongly agreed that the paper of the board, of the, going forward of appeals overturn that somewhat suspect decision. It has been a gas station for 90 years in Rock until this, and three gas stations in Walton, Compton Fire, the Sycamore, and the old Asana Station has been permitted this. He had a permit to hold a new gas station there, but they did not utilize it because the turn of the economy. But three gas stations have been allowed in Rock in the last several years, and a plant that's been there for 90 years is not allowed anymore because there's no mention of gas stations in the zone as a use.
I understand that.
As a use, though. You can't even use the word. They don't recognize it, which that needs to be corrected. But without, we concentrate on the 12 years, which is a lot, and I hope, I will be hopeful that the decision goes to the paper of the board tomorrow, and we can get that place back on the tax roll, but it is up in the tax roll. It's now back in operation, and I think the plants are, are, they sell gas, or don't, and they have small teams, and clean up the property, or parking, etc., etc. Will be a real asset to the community as it was for 90 years from various, Derek Miller was there for 38 years.
Okay, I agree with John, Anne, Dan.
Buy it now, buy it today.
I'm in favor of asking to have it overturned. Mark?
I agree. I'm sure his purchase was the intention.
I mean, should we have, like, motion?
We're going to vote on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that the select board vote in favor of the administrative appeal presented by Ellipton Oil as presented.
So second? Okay, motion been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
It is a, a dissonant time. What's happened here is given the town of Dalton a very bad word in terms of the way it's falling, this has been going on for, well, nine months, and it's been held unable to be settled. Yeah, the Lippin family was very hesitant now to make a major investment in the town because of the way they'd be treated, and a lot of people feel the same way, they'll be suing, be treating in the business, like. It happens because of the lift.
Okay. I think the zoning enforcement officer is reading it very strictly to the letter of the law and...
You know, when you, when you brought to his attention, was that his going?
Yeah.
That Derek Miller, if he did, he sells bulk products of oil, had down, he used to get 10 gallons of dog's oil.
Sure he did.
It was disregarded, and it, yeah. So, fair enough. So that's the reason for the administrative appeal rather than the variance, is because they believe the documentation demonstrates its continued use, and therefore...
Absolutely. Okay, let's move on. A discussion regarding Dalton Division Road project. Tom?
Yes. There, our engineers are ready for a next step, and part of that is going to be to start to finalize a plan that the town, who's with the state. I looked over this with the chair, co-chair, and there was some sentiment with the town at the select board of looking again at the decision that was made previously to recommend two sidewalks, two bike lanes for Dalton Division Road and roundabout at the intersection of Williams. There are several parts to that, but we thought that it would be a good idea to talk a little bit about those options again for making a final move forward. That would be the most expensive and certainly not the preferred design either of the engineer or of the state. So I believe the engineers schedule to speak at your next meeting, and so a little preliminary discussion, the discussion would be helpful to help set that meeting up to be productive.
Okay, we need two bike lanes and two sidewalks.
Mr. Chairman, let's talk about the roundabout for a second.
Okay.
Get over here. Let's head down the market. Bob? Tom? The board recalls, and I really, I think it was in March, February, we were talking, actually talking about the sidewalk at the time, and the chairman, the distinguished Mr. Diver, interjected with a motion to not allow the roundabout. Wow, it came out of nowhere, and with little discussion, except for myself who opposed it, the board voted and agreed with him. They voted against the roundabout.
I opposed it, too.
Did you? I'm sorry? I apologize. Now I oppose it with you. Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm, I remember you, you used to be. Well, I prepared this little thing that was lapsed, Mr. Diver, as chairman, filled with knowledge. He brought forward this motion, and he did not see any input from the Dalton Police Chief, or the Pittsfield Police Chief, Dalton Fire Chief, Pittsfield Police Chief, Dalton Road Superintendent, Pittsfield Chairman, Director, Public Works, Dalton Neighbors, Pittsfield Neighbors, Pittsfield Mayor, two city councilors, two districts, a lot there. He did not consult that. We saw no input. So it moved from the MPO, the VRPC, or the DLT, or, and we ignored the input of the engineering firm at the time because they hadn't reached the 25%, completion date, so they hadn't really worked their plans, but the DLT strongly favored. Now, since that time, right after, I took the time to consult a lot of these people. In fact, I met with the Pittsfield City Councils. I met with the mayor. I talked to the director of the CPW in Pittsfield. He's on the MPO, and they all strongly support the roundabout. Yes, Mr. Diver, in his ivory tree, and wrote all that.
John, the board bashing you all, okay? Let's just move on to the...
Okay. I just...
Okay, we get it.
Thanks, but wait.
I get it, we get it. Let's just move on to your points.
Okay.
Okay.
My point is, I don't think we've had a fair and informed and consulted these people prior to making a decision, and I, but I think it's been suggested by you that we do this decision.
Yes, it was.
Now, I, I basically, my opinion, we should leave this. The roundabout decision basically can enhance the state and DOT. Neither of them have provided money and the funds to develop this line, but we should look at it anyway. But I would suggest, as suggested by the engineer, there was a sidewalk on Pittsfield side, and then we all wanted on Dalton side, but he said that would be maybe expensive or costing more cost. So I would suggest to the board that maybe we take the decision there. Good, you want to save money, drop the one on the Pittsfield side, or ask Pittsfield to pay for it, and re-institute the tolls? It's all in the same amount. It's enough.
Thank you for your points. They're good. Anyone else? Mark?
Look, it's hard to speak on this subject when there's nothing in front of us other than John's hand and notes.
Yeah, well, there was nothing that they...
Well, if it's going to be up in front of us at our next meeting, that's, we can get some more information, and then I'll, I'll get it. But for right now, I guess all you're looking for is the discussion, and you got it.
Yeah.
I'd say that the meeting, Mr. Boyle is referencing, I support the roundabout, Dalton Division, Williams, and as to where the sidewalk falls, I would say path of least resistance, most affordable plan, gets this done in a timely fashion, it gets, I think there would be bike lanes naturally on both sides of the, or can you put it by, by...
I believe...
On my side more, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, whatever makes the most sense. I definitely wasn't in support of the motion, you know, that was made at that meeting, but I'd be happy to hear what they have to present at the next meeting, and it would be in support of advancing path of least resistance. It is harder done. I, they have been a sidewalk on that whole road, that's why it doesn't really matter what side it's on.
Yeah. I think a sidewalk was huge. Okay, we'll do what they say. Thank you. Okay, number 10. Berkshire Regional Transit Authority's new MOU on public participation reporting within the Berkshire Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Yes, there is an existing memorandum of understanding. One of the things, and it says that they will send out any items that would change the MOU to illicit stakeholders, which includes select... So we're now being consulted as per the MOU on a proposed change to the MOU. The proposed change has to do with transparency. There are several things that they're proposing to do that they have not done in the past. Have provisions for developing and sharing performance data with information, to list BRCA's responsibilities in the development and sharing of information, financial trends, developing an annual list of obligated projects, and having provisions for cooperatively developing and sharing the performance information. So they would like to amend the MOU, and this is because the Federal Transit Authority said, hey, you don't have these provisions in your MOU. You need them. We need more public involvement. So BRCA is proposing these things. The changes have to go through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, doing the transportation planning for the region, and the MPO will make the final decision as to whether or not to accept this, but this is part of the public involvement process whereby this information is shared more broadly, and people have a chance to weigh in. In this case, this is specifically directed at the select board for your opportunity to weigh in on these.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Any comments?
It's like a reasonable change that will provide more information to the members who are supporting this organization, and I don't really have any objection. I mean, it's important.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure they would appreciate the vote in support of the provisions.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take a vote in support of the amended memorandum of understanding between Berkshire Regional Transit Commission and its member towns, cities.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, next we have the ARPA update recessions.
Yes, you have the latest official accounting for the ones that have been committed, expended, and what remains, the unspent funds. I can add to that, it looks as though the item for EB course, which was approved on March 27, 2023, so it's about two-thirds of the way down, $42,000, and it looks as though we may save $13,000 from that. That's not great news. Part of it is because we were not able to get a yield that's provided in our course, but we are going to get some out of that, and it looks as though... in more course, but we are going to get some out of that, and it looks as though it will be thirteen thousand, roughly, in that account. For the town hall, for the engineering, for the town hall police department basement renovation, that's including both HVAC and plumbing. We now anticipate that we will come in well under eighty-two thousand for the preliminary engineering cost estimates on those two jobs. That would save somewhere between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars, depending on how much under the plumbing estimate comes in. And we do hope that it comes in under thirty thousand dollars, that simplifies the procurement eventually. Forty feasibility study, for which a hundred thousand dollars is committed, we believe we will be able to get that done for sixty-five thousand dollars, but two more purposes work added to that allocation, one of them being the video demonstrating the meeting, and the other one is looking online and come on, but it is another related, something related revision, there was something that's also related to that. So I estimate that we could save about ten to twenty thousand on that, which means that, and the others are either unknown now or likely to come in close. So I'm estimating now that we'll have an extra forty-eight to sixty-three thousand dollars available that we can and should allocate to something else. There are any number of ways we can do that. One that came up at a recent meeting I attended was that we could have the board authorize a certain amount in expense, and have it be in a particular category, but not entirely specified, for instance, DPW materials, or somewhere where there's a relatively hefty expenditure of capital that could be made. That would give us the flexibility when the numbers came in, to then either put that out to bid, or get a, you know, get a quote that we can sign on to and therefore commit those funds. So over the next month, that should become much clearer of the numbers and the paths forward. So that's what I'll plan to bring forward to you in November. So that we can get those funds expended by December.
Okay. That'd be good, we need to clean that up.
No action needed from us tonight?
No, this is just to make sure that we speak on what's going on in my plans shortly near.
No recessions, no other action or discussion, we're all set on all three?
Right, yeah, nothing else you're here to learn.
Okay, discussion on public address to the board, allow up to three minutes per person.
Yeah, this should come up a little bit earlier, and the idea is that we want to, especially when a number of people want to be heard, we want to be able to make sure they hear as many voices as possible. We do allow up to thirty minutes total for the public to speak to the board. However, limiting the number of minutes per person, this will allow ten people to speak, if ten people want to speak. We have that meeting square, about that number of people wanting to speak. This would ensure that they are able to do so, and with enough time to get their point across.
Yeah, we really can't discuss it anyway, so. John, how do you feel about?
I have against. There's a perfect example this evening with the lady, Ms. Sharp, from Central Avenue. She takes at least thirty minutes to explain her partner, and she needed all three of her four. And she wouldn't have been able to do that on these rules. And I think that's the reason why we're here, because to listen to the citizens that are here with the agreements or appointments, there's never been a problem before. I recall being followed with people abusing him by a fellow watching, talking at length. And I don't think we're ever going to be any problems with the thirty minute limit. And it's all he does, is expression, the chairman accepts it. I'm sure it would be happy with the way they sound.
Anyone else?
It's a pretty common expectation or limitation of the citizen speak time at select boards in the region, in the area. I know great variants, sometimes the four minutes, maybe a little bit more active of a community down there, maybe. I've attended a select board meeting down there, and there was probably a hundred people in the meeting time, a hundred citizens, and many of them wanted to speak. So I guess it depends on the situation, but I wouldn't have a problem with it, limiting the time personally.
I'm going to agree with Dan. I think this is, we've been lucky that we haven't had something like this where somebody's going to get up and filibuster for thirty minutes, meanwhile shutting out everybody else talking. I think three minutes is not unreasonable, and I think, you know, if the chairman wants to, at his discretion, extend it, that'd be fine also. But I always look at what could happen, just like you said, we wind up with a hundred people here, and everybody wants to talk for twenty minutes, and then I, you know, could really shut down the meeting by doing that, so.
Hey, I might go here, oh, I don't need that, the chairman's discretion.
Well, we do lay out the ground rules.
Yeah, it's a duck there, it's a duck that's outlined, I do as the original agenda, but it's definitely swatching, chairman's discretion will allow them to continue with their issue.
You're trusting.
I think the other thing that we do that's different is we allow citizens to speak on the subject when they come up also. So it's not like they get to speak at the beginning, and that's it, we shut them out for the rest of the meeting. When an item comes up, they don't just have to, can speak about them, they can also speak up when we bring it up on the agenda. So, you know, we also do that, so.
Also with the chairman's discretion.
Yeah, somebody's almost done, I mean, I'm, who's going to sit here with a stopwatch
I'll make a motion that we allow each individual up to three minutes in open comment section, unless an extension is given by the chair.
It's all subject.
The motion been made in second, is there any further discussion? Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Tom, man, if you're up, please.
Thank you. Over the past two weeks, I've spent a great deal of time having items on today's agenda. Very good. Boarding project. Beyond that, though, I was in the housing court on Wednesday with the town treasurer, I am town council. We were able to come to an amicable agreement concerning about five years of back taxes for some residents who I've paid for in those five years. We hope the residents will pay their payments between now and May, and can stay in the house. We were also able to get the residents to sign a whole harness agreement so that the town will not be held responsible for any insurance matters while the payments are being paid. We're moving forward with filling the vacant health agent clerk assessors clerk positions, and to have account locations for each. We also have a very promising applicant for the conservation agency position referred to us by us through the state.
Tom, real quick, has anybody done exit interviews on these two positions that we're working to fill?
The assessor's clerk position isn't, it was vacated by the client, second assessor, who's still working. So the vacancy is due to resignation of the assessors last June. And for the health agent clerk, I did not have a formal exit interview, but I do understand the circumstances for the question. I have several procurements out for bid, the employee campbook bids are due to be opened on Monday, say, the garage, it's roof bid opening on November 6th, a DPW stormwater engineering bid on November 13th, and a police station disability study on November 20th. Each of these has associated question and answer periods, and will require records, checks, number of reds required to acceptance. We're also moving forward with transfer station, transfer station redesigned as approved and funded at town meeting, so a number of projects are in motion. I just mentioned earlier, through several select board meetings, all the community television is not going to be able to broadcast live, those meetings were taped and done later. The public had its group in a change in hardware, resulting in a change of the station's internet IP address, which cascaded into a variety of electronic errors. We hope that the problem is solved. I've been surveying for a variety of issues related to reinstallation of electric vehicle charging stations. We should be nearing the end of missions, hope to have a CRA station live soon with the senior center of not far behind. That's where I have it.
No questions for Tom? Who's, anybody on the conservation?
The town planner and I.
Okay.
I don't know. If you'd like to be in on that.
No, I just wonder if somebody from the commission would be willing to sit in on it too.
All right, well. If there were a chair, I would expect the last person to take that over, without somebody taking that responsibility, it's difficult to pick.
Okay, just a question, that's all.
I believe Cheryl offered, if you want to hear that.
It's up to Tom, it's up to you.
I'm sorry, can you?
I believe Cheryl offered, if you would like for that, that's how I believe, chair.
Okay, I can ask Cheryl.
Okay.
But, yeah, it would just be one person from the conservation.
It should be somebody from the commission.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, future agenda items, any new ones?
No new ones, but we may want to remove some of the items on, just to clean the list out.
Yep, we can do that.
First, rush traffic with ARPA funds. I don't know that it needs to stay on this, there's a request, we need to come before the board, before the board.
Right, we can take that off, yeah.
You know, this is agenda items that the board members would propose, and we wouldn't necessarily propose. As a center of ARPA funds, we would be presented with a proposal to prove it or not.
I agree with you.
So, meeting location, visit when wheelchair lift is repaired. That's been on here for over a year, well, about a year now.
Before we all know, we're going to go back to town hall when it's repaired.
For now, we're.
I think the meeting was repaired, it's out of the, yeah. I think we're here in a while.
That could be removed.
Why don't we take that off, we all know we're going to go back to whatever, whatever anything gets finished.
How we increase attendance at town meetings, I think we had discussions on this.
We did that.
And for some reason it didn't, was not removed, we can certainly revisit that, you know, certainly for the next all annual town meeting.
The origin of ARPA today, you would want to have a proposed date to put the idea on the bid, whatever.
I will check on that, we're not putting that to the table, the engineer is going to be there. And I will check on what is expected, because I don't believe there are any problems with that going forward.
I think when it got put on the agenda here as a future agenda item, it was, there was an update presented, it just wasn't removed from this, so I think that needs to be removed as well. Just jumping around a little bit. Proposed policy for signs on town property, that came up.
That's on me to work on that.
Okay. So we're going to keep that on here as a future, yeah. Revisit cleanup fund for residents.
We're gonna, they're going to come back with.
Yeah, they're coming back, that was presented to us, so I would say that could probably be removed from here, and when they're ready to come present, they can go on the agenda.
The line between that, update on BO page 21, I assume that means the business owners that were building, they were being overly lethally important to health, I think that's been resolved for me.
It's not.
Has happened?
Well, the last update Tom gave us was that he thought everything was going well, but he hadn't spoken to Mr. Sears.
I was given a contact which I reached out to and have not received a response from this time. And I imagine that if there were issues, I'd go to that, but I can reach out then.
Yes, please.
I think that's.
That's good for now.
I'd say that's good enough for now, I mean, there's some more stuff here that we'll have to figure out. And when we're going to put it on, a future agenda item, but this will help at least focus the list for us.
Yep. Okay, items not anticipated forty-eight hours before the meeting, any? Okay, remarks at the select board. Go ahead.
Congratulations to the Wakona volleyball team winning the Class B, there you go, first time ever, they'll go on to states now.
Because they beat them up very well.
They beat them the week before.
No, didn't, yeah. Okay. Any other remarks?
Yes, I just have a good item. Legal, which you don't misconstrue, is annual voting for the best of the merchants, being businesses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And several Dalton personages, businesses, locations, et cetera, received the best in the purchase award. And if I could just quickly read them.
Go for it.
Yeah. The print's fine here. Animal Inn, that's on the Harbor Avenue, Angelina's South, Works with Dream Home, which has just recently been sold to a company, national company called La Magia, they're already in business, Works with Money, Works with Money Gangster, Crayville Place of Dalton, Dalton, I don't express, U Star dealership up on, even the Downing Street, six years in a row, they've gotten this award, you're right, they probably have a big sign out for their place. Dalton CRA, Wired, in family pool home, Derek Campbell, obviously, and the premier football coach, Gray Light Pencil Company, Bill Engineering, Hi, Hickers, LBO, and there's a couple on the next week. Hey, Angels Academy, Shire Donuts, it's down on, by Burgess Farm, Pittsfield Quander Bank, West Auto Motor by Meepo Street, and last but not least, with disease, Zinkies Pub. Even if it is involved, we've all known it, heard of it, and, you know, they should be proud of their operations, the community should be too, they have provided valuable services to Daltonians and other folks from other towns, and we are proud of them. are proud of them.
They're all going to be.
Well, yeah, Bob, that's.
They're all going to be at the stationary. What's that, what's the game?
I got it right here. Try everything.
I can look it up.
I got it in here, I have it. On Thursday, Thursday, the fourteenth, as the stationary factory, did it get ready based?
Let me go check.
Yep. We went to the stationary.
Starting.
Factory website.
Yep.
Confirm the event time.
Yes, go on the website.
Yeah, he's like a website.
But it is.
I like to do that, all, all the winners, in every category, swallowed the gum.
Yeah, they have handouts and stuff like that, so it's pretty cool.
Yeah, I would like you to pray, Bob.
Yeah, I got a lot of friends. Okay.
Thanks, John.
Oh, here's a, eleven fourteen, five, seven PM. Counting seven, one, eight, four, two, the best.
Okay.
How many bits? Twenty, about twenty dollars.
I just counted up there, so we're at least twenty out of the eighty. We had twenty five percent of the, uh, winners in merch count, twenty five percent of the way.
Okay, should be proud of it.
Yeah.
This takes us to the announcements. Want to know what's happening in Dalton, sign up for the monthly newsletter. Please pick, uh, visit the town website for more, more information. And I believe we have a name for the newspaper now, correct?
Paper Town News?
Paper Town News, okay. Trick or treat will be held in Dalton on Thursday, October 31st from 5:30 to 7:00. Dalton Police Department is reminding citizens of Dalton of new winter parking ban, which goes in effect November 15th, 2024, and will be in effect to April 15th, 2025, between the one hours of 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM. During this time, there will be no parking allowed on the streets. Central Berkshire Habitat for Humanity will be drawn a name for the applicants for 16 Golf Road on Tuesday, October 29th at 4:00. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies. Please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. The Dalton Housing Authority has one vacancy on their board, must be adult resident. Please contact Sue Gregory at 684-2493 for more information. The town is contracted with Colonial Power to provide electricity plan for town residents that takes advantage of joining other communities to have a larger customer base for negotiations, which has resulted in prices lower than current ever source prices. For more details to opt out or in, visit town websites or call town manager's office. The town of Dalton currently has the following part-time job opportunities, the COV van driver, assesses clerk, administrative assistant to the health agent, assistant building and ground superintendent, as well as a contracted position for a conservation agent. Please visit the town website or contact town manager's office at 413-684-6111, expecting the 202 for more information. The next meeting of the regular select board is scheduled to take place on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the town hall with an option for remote participation. Uh, we have to go there because there's another meeting here and we will make arrangements for anybody handicapped to go through the library. With that, Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation as we find that there would have detrimental effect on the litigating position of this public body.
And not return.
And not return.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, second. Roll call vote, Mark.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Bob, yes. Reconvene in two minutes. Thank you, Robert.